Good afternoon. I'd like to call the April Board Meeting of Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees to order. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We, you'll notice a little change in our seating order tonight. I was an elementary teacher and whenever we had students that maybe were not aligned with each other on a certain event or day, we would rearrange seating. And I'm not suggesting that we've had administrative disalignment or trustee disalignment, but we're trying a new seating arrangement tonight. And it's fun to watch the people come in because they were a little surprised at where they're sitting. With that, we have a little unique item tonight in that we have our budget workshop. But at this time, we'll have the roll call and recognition of visitors.
This evening's visitors include Dick Carter, Rebecca Fossbinder, and Christine Atkinson.
Thank you very much, and welcome to our meeting. Awards and recognitions, Dr. Sopch.
Yes, I'd like to ask Karen Martley to introduce our John and Sue Ann Rouge Excellence Award winners.
My pleasure. Mark and Jeff, if you could please some forward. Tonight, we're going to recognize our John and Sue Ann Rouge Excellence Award winners. And this award was established in 2012 through the League of Innovation, and it was to recognize League board member schools and also the Alliance, I'm getting that right, yes, the Alliance schools as well too, or the groups in the system. And you would send forward your nominee names. So we get nominations each year, a committee reviews them, and we submit up to two to the League each year where they're recognized. And they were recognized this past February at the conference. The two, I would like to just share a little bit about what they said about them in their nominations, because I think it says a lot about both Jeff and Mark. I'm going to start with Mark. Mark Van Gorp is one of our professors, he's an associate professor and a CSIT assistant chair. Mark has exemplified a commitment to the scholarship of teaching and learning. He's a chair in the department. He's chaired Educational Affairs Institutional Curriculum. But he's also been a member of numerous committees, projects, task force. We see him in a lot of professional development. We've worked with Mark on a number of things. It's always been such a pleasure, because he's so collaborative and so good with his relationships. But what I hear the most about Mark is his commitment to staying current within the industry. As you know, when you work in IT, it's changing all the time. And the one thing about Mark is you will often see students in your office with you talking to you about career advice, or talking about getting extra assistance with their classes. So we want to recognize you. Mark was not able to go to the conference, but we do have a medallion for you, Mark, and a program of the event that I'd like to have Dr. Cook present to you. Jeff Hoyer is our other recipient this year. Jeff did attend the conference, and he had an extended stay there in the snowstorm. So we're just glad he's back. But Jeff Hoyer, I'm so proud of Jeff. He works in my department, so this is really special for me to get to recognize Jeff tonight. But Jeff was recognized for numerous projects in his nomination, but the word that kept coming out was collaboration, building positive relationships with everyone across campus. The thing that most people know about Jeff is he starts with yes, not no. And I had that experience myself today, when I'd already decided the answer was no, and he gave me great solutions to things. But he's really, really good about doing that, and also making sure our students come first, and that we do what's best for them and not what is easiest for us. So congratulations, Jeff, as our award recipient again this year. Appreciate it.
Can I have your car for a month?
That's for a minute.
He said yes.
Yeah.
If you need my car, you really don't want it.
Gentlemen, on behalf of the trustees, congratulations and thank you for the great work you're doing. Be thankful that if you're in IT and things change so much, you're not in front of the Senate or the House this week testifying on Facebook. Thanks, guys. As we review our budget calendar, this is the month that we have our budget workshop. And the reason we started our board meeting at four o'clock is to go through the budget workshop. It's an opportunity for staff to orient the board as to where we are with budget preparations. You'll recall then that as we go through the budget workshop, and we've had a number of sessions up to this point, staff really begin, I believe, Dr. Larson, in earnest in December, January, but lots of discussion takes place even prior to that. And then, from the trustee's standpoint, we will be considering a management budget next month. And then we have a notice of public hearing, and I believe our public hearing that will be in August as we move ahead. So with that, Dr. Larson, if you would lead us through the budget workshop. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Cook. And I have the easy job, and that is introducing Rachel Lear as our Associate Vice President for Finance over the Financial Services area, and really to thank her and Chandra Russell, who is here with us, for their extraordinary work in putting together a very complex budget at a large institution. We often talk about the fact that we have 120-plus budget administrators, so this is a budget with many, many folks involved, and they do just excellent work. So I want to thank my colleagues, the deans, the department chairs, administrators, all of you, as well as the board, for providing the direction that we need to make this a smooth and really important process at the institution. And with that, I will turn it over to Rachel, who will take you through the book that you should have received, both electronically and at your tables. And Rachel, thank you so much.
Thank you. So yes, for tonight's budget workshop, I'd like to start by going through some of the highlights of the book, which you all received electronically earlier during the week. Hard copies should be at your spots, they're on the table. So it's a very lengthy document, nearly 100 pages. I'll just move through it pretty quickly, hit on the high points. Feel free to interrupt and ask questions as they come to mind, and we can stop and address those. And then in summary, in closing, I do have just a few PowerPoint slides, some of the material that the management committee saw last week, just to kind of summarize again and talk about the next action steps from here. So with that, let's moving through the first couple pages in the document to really begin, like we do every year, with the mission, vision, and values of the college, and then the strategic plan. So the 2017-2020 Strategic Plan, again, and that mission, vision, and values is used to provide direction to our budget development process, really to assist in the resource allocation and prioritization process in order to ensure that we're focusing our budget on these priorities: academic excellence, student success, employee engagement, community engagement, and operational excellence. From there, moving into the budget guidelines and calendar, our practice is that the Board of Trustees approves the budget guidelines every year in December. What that allows us to do then is to get started, as Dr. Cook mentioned, in the December-January timeframe, with really putting the budget together. At that time, back in December, we not only provided the management committee with these proposed guidelines, but also with the college's five-year financial projection model. I won't sit here and go through all of these individual guidelines, because we've covered them a number of times. I wanted to focus instead on what is on page eight of your book, which are kind of a set of updated guidelines, and really these are preliminary and pending approval next month in May with the adoption of the management budget. And that is the proposed adjustment to the assessed valuation and property tax guideline that was recommended initially back in December. So at that time, we had based the budget estimates pretty conservatively, I think, on an estimated increase in assessed valuation for the county of 5%. And at that time, had recommended a 1/10 mill reduction, based upon those factors that we would have approximately $99.5 million of property tax revenue in the college's general fund. So that was in December. Again, fast forward to March, to last month, when we received updated information from the county appraisers' office, and found that we needed to increase our estimate for the assessed valuation from 5% up to 7%. So with that, in order to still achieve about $99.5 million of property tax revenue in the general fund, we're recommending, instead of a 10th mill rollback, a quarter of a mill rollback, from about 9.5 to 9.25 mils. So that's really the only change in the guidelines, as you have seen them. Are there any questions on that, or anything else we want to cover?
I do have one question. I realize this is not a change from the December to the forecast, you know, at this point with the enrollment, but can you remind me why we looked at a 2% reduction in enrollment?
In enrollment?
Yes, credit hour enrollment.
Yes, and you're right. That's item number three on this sheet.
Oh, I'm sorry. You were...
Yeah, no, and that's fine.
I jumped.
That's fine. What that is doing is basically, this year, we had estimated that our credit hour enrollment would remain flat. We have seen a slight decrease of around 2%, and so what we're doing is building that into the budget for next year in order to conservatively estimate that amount for next year. Now, we're hoping to exceed that, of course, but I think this really resets the budget with where we're at right now.
And I apologize, I thought you had done that when we were going to move on from that.
Yeah, no, that's fine. That's a key component of this that I haven't talked about.
Had we, I was not here last month. Had we voted on the .25? This is new, right?
No, this is new. So the management committee saw this last week on Wednesday, and this is coming to you for the first time. The information was received from the appraisers' office around March 10.
And the answer is no, we have not voted on it?
And it won't be voted on tonight. The vote will occur next month.
I mean, absent an obscene amount of Chinese money coming into our real estate market, how long do we think that real estate values are going to keep going up at astronomical rates?
Well, one of the tables that's in the document that we received from Paul Welkham's office is a residential real estate cycle, and it kind of goes like this. So we're near the top, you know? I think this year, next year, maybe about flat, and then it does, and his projection starting to taper off and cycle back down. And I think that's typical. It's hard to say exactly when that will occur, but you know, that is forecasted.
Mr. Trustee Cook likes me to voice my opinion, so that I can speak dissent and offer any solutions I might have. And I'm just noting my objection to the .25 cut in an age of budget cuts, and we still don't know what the state's going to do, we think, but they're playing games. And so certainly, we're all glad real estate and property values have gone up. I just would rather put the money aside or reinvest, because we're cutting programs like track. And I didn't enjoy the last three months, listening to people complain and frankly fill up my inbox with emails when we're also cutting the mill. I'm just noting that cognitive dissonance that I have. I know you're doing your best. I'm just reserving the right to make any argument at this point, as I learned that we're cutting at .25 mils. So with that, Mr. Chair, I thank you for the time.
What's at this time, yeah, if there are other viewpoints about that, let's talk about it right now. Again, we won't vote on this until next month.
I want to clarify, we projected a budget on a 5% increase in assessed value that was going to lead to about $99.5 million worth of property tax revenues.
Yes.
And that if we have a 7% increase and drop the mill levy .25 instead of .1, we still end up at approximately $99.5 million in ad valorem property tax revenues.
Yes.
So we're exactly where we wanted to be since December, and earlier by staff, but in December, when we accepted the guidelines.
Correct.
Because as last year, we didn't project as much increase in assessed value as there actually was.
Right. We tend to conservatively estimate that back in the fall when we're starting the budget.
And last year, I don't remember exactly the amount of revenues, but it was seven figures of additional assessed value that we hadn't projected.
I believe it was between $2 and $3 million.
$2 or $3 million. And we kept that last year, because we decided it was better to spend that on our capital projects rather than borrow more money, which made perfect sense to me now. Now, we borrowed our $50 million for the facilities master plan. And so I know we'll have further discussion in May and formal discussion in August, when we have the formal public hearing. But I'm very supportive of, I was supportive of more than .1 reduction last fall, and I'm supportive of the .25 reduction now. And I'm not totally convinced we couldn't reduce it a little bit more, because property taxpayers have, we know there's lots of appeals, and we know that lots of people have been hit pretty hard over a couple of years. So as long as we're at the same number of dollars that we thought we needed last fall going into the budget process, I'm fine with where the mill levy lands. Thank you.
Trustee Lindstrom.
At the management committee, when we reviewed this proposal, I commended the president and his staff for bringing this forward. I did not, however, ask the question, and I'll ask it tonight, were there any more significant reductions considered?
Reductions in the levy amount?
In the mill levy?
No, because we had modeled, we had modeled that five-year financial projection based on that number, and so our goal was to stay, like you said, about that same amount going forward.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing this forward. I am certainly pleased with that.
Trustee Snyder, trustee Lawson, any comments?
I'm also in support. Obviously, heard about this, the management committee, and I think trustee Musial's, you know, logic as far as staying in the total dollar amount and adjusting our mill levy makes sense. I am sensitive to the fact that if there are significant erosion of the property tax base over time, and it puts us in a position of having to go back and increase the mill, but I don't think that there's much, I'm not overly concerned about that.
I have some similar concerns, as trustee Cross. I'm looking at the population growth. I don't see a line item of that curve that we're experiencing in Johnson County, and the population increase that we're having in certain areas, especially in the West, that might impact our student enrollment rate here, that's quoted at 2% reduction, but could we actually see a growth, and needing that income to be able to support the growth that we have. I also look at, historically, has Johnson County been one of the lowest taxed counties in this area for quite a while? So we're seeing the growth experienced more here, more homes starting at $300, $400, $500,000 homes, which I think for local residents, that's much of a sticker price, but a lot of people coming in from out of state, it's quite a value for them. When I look at everything in comparison, I think that we should really look to give back some to the community, to kind of see, and I feel the heat that the property owners have on the property tax increase, but I'm curious about a compromise that we might have in also improving the college through some new programs that will better help to continue the growing population wealth and property wealth that we have here. I think the better Johnson County Community College has, and our community has, on the value of our property and the business that we have here, that we might be able to look at some kind of compromise of both.
If I may... Trustee Ingram, and then we'll do trustee Snyder and trustee Cross.
I do.
Do you have anything you want to say? Trustee Snyder?
I was going to save this for later, if you went through all the charts showing, you know, the property tax assessment compared to tuition and state funding. At some point, I'd like this board to settle on some ratios, what we think are appropriate amounts. We've gone from, you know, roughly 60% or a little under 60% to now 65% funding through property tax. And I guess I would like some assurances that, you know, over time, that's not going to slowly creep up to 80% or something like that. And tonight's not necessarily the time to do it, but at some point, I think we ought to have a discussion about what those ratios should be.
Trustee Cross?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I love this institution dearly, and I'll do anything to protect it, but I'm just going to tell this board and people sitting at this table, mine is not an automatic vote to raise the mill. When Governor Collier or Governor Kobach comes into office and we're faced with cuts, I'm asking you to think about what you're doing, right? I get the, we're calling the ball right now, property's up, and, you know, everything's assessed value's great, that's great, it's wonderful, really is good for myself and my family. Nevertheless, you know, we're going to face a conservative era, with Greg Orman running to upset the apple cart in the governor's race for progressives to try to get in there. You face very real possibilities that conservatives, moderates, and Democrats are going to get slaughtered in the gains that they made two years ago. So some of you are running for reelection next year, and while you're happy to cut the mill now, you're going to have to raise the mill in an election year. So somebody's got to say it, I'm happy to play that role, but mine is not an automatic vote to get you out of a hole that we just dug here.
Let me just say, and we'll move on, you've all made compelling statements. And as we go through the rest of the workshop, I would ask you to kind of examine, as trustee Snyder has suggested, when we get into some of the other charts, to get into a comparative issue of where our funding has come from. And there's no doubt that, as we go back several years, back to 2010, the local property tax, the local property owner is paying an increased proportion of our revenue. And there are things that we just have a difficult time in projecting or understanding. So to say, I would like to have some assurance that this is going to happen. I don't know what those assurances are, Paul. Mr. Carter's going to give a report tonight from our lobbyist. It appears that the dark box theory is kind of dead temporarily, but I was in a presentation, I think trustee Cross, you were there that day as well, when Paul Welkham said that if that would come through, that maybe that would be an extra burden on the residential owner, which then would get to that 75% to 80% funding by the property owner. So I would just ask all of us to, as we go through these slides, to think in the best interest of the college going forward, and you've done that historically, and the staff has done a terrific job. It's what has placed our college in a really strong financial position in the marketplace. And so just use good sense, and we'll try and look in the crystal ball as well as we can. Continue, Rachel.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next couple pages are the budget cycle calendar. Again, you mentioned earlier in your remarks, it's a very long process, basically a 12-month undertaking. And again, I just wanted to take the opportunity to acknowledge Chandra Russell, the college's budget analyst, for the great work that she does all year long to guide the process, and is responsible for a lot of the really great information that you have in front of you tonight. From there, we'll talk about the revenues in the college's general fund for next year. This pie chart is a representation that you have seen. In the past, we do have about $153.8 million in revenue budgeted, or proposed, I guess, for next year in the college's general fund, which is the primary operating fund, of course. 65% of that, in the blue shaded area, is from property tax revenue, as you indicated, trustee Snyder, followed by the tuition and fees, and the state operating grant as far as percentages of the total. We do have a small bit of investment and other income that kind of rounds out the budget, and that's about $3 million. On page 15, this is a historical look over the past 10 years at the revenue sources in the general fund. Again, the budget has grown from about $120 million to about $153 million over that time, and you can see the percentage fluctuations, the growth in the assessed valuation driving the ad valorem property tax revenue increases, and then the relative decreases in tuition and state aid as a percentage of the total budget.
Rachel, if I might, and maybe we can address trustee Snyder's question here. Historically, and I've been on the board nine years, I think nine years ago, and trustee Musial and trustee Lindstrom, trustee Cross, I guess came on a little bit later, and trustee Ingram, I think we were talking about, it would be kind of a pretty good world if we could get 50% from local property tax, 25% tuition, and 25% state. That was kind of a number that we kind of looked at, and you can see what's happened, and a lot of that has been affected by the state support. And we've been sensitive, this board has been very sensitive to not placing student tuition in a non-manageable number, which I applaud this board for. But anyway, Paul, that's kind of where, historically, we had been. Now, should that change? Yeah, possibly, with different trends, and of course, what's going on with state support. Go ahead, Rachel.
Okay. Next, on page 16, we have a look back at the assessed valuation and the college's mill levy. In each of the past six years, assessed valuation has increased. We talked about that real estate cycle, and, you know, that when that will correct itself or start moving in the opposite direction, we'll eventually get there. The college's mill levy is in the fourth column there, and has relatively, remained relatively consistent over time. I think if you look at the chart on the bottom, you'll notice five years ago, there was a 3/4 mill increase, followed by a 10th mill decrease in the following year. For the past three years, as you know, we've made no change to the levy rate, and then the proposed quarter reduction is shown on the chart for 1819. Next, we have an analysis of a hypothetical residence at the corner of College and Quivira, and what the total levy looks like, based on all of the taxing jurisdictions that are applicable. So you'll see not only the college's levy, but the state, the Olahtha School District, City of Overland Park, and then the county parks and rec and library. My, the key takeaway for me on this slide is that the college's portion of the total mill levy has remained consistent at 8% over that time, despite the slight variations in the individual rates. The next page is based, again, on some information that we received from the county appraisers' office. And this is just saying, for an average, a residence with an average appraised value of $299,000, what would be the approximate amount of taxes levied for the college? And when you apply the residential assessment rate of 11.5% and multiply that by the levy, that comes out to about $318 versus $307 in the current year, based on an average appraised value of only $281. So the impact is about $11, and that's an annual amount.
And, if I may, the commercial is assessed at twice that, right? At 25?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And it's important to factor in the burden that it creates on our commercial in Johnson County's program.
25 what? I'm sorry?
Whereas the residential assessment rate is 11.5 there, that applies, that's for residential property. I've talked so far mostly about the college's general fund. Just as a reminder, we do have a special assessment fund and our capital outlay fund, which are also funded through the mill levy. The special assessments is essentially a pass-through to Johnson County wastewater of sewer tax assessments, and then our capital outlay fund is a half-mill directed towards, excuse me, capital projects here at the college. So that puts our total property tax revenue at just over $100 million in all funds. Okay, so moving on into revenue from student tuition and fees, I wanted to talk a little bit about the credit hours and then the tuition prices, the two factors that are part of that. And this chart, again, going back 10 years, helps to illustrate the enrollment trend over that time. Obviously, the peak was in FY 2011 at 379,000 student credit hours. We're down about 15% in total since that point. This is typically where we remind ourselves that community college enrollments run generally counter to the economic cycle. So in periods like current, where unemployment is very low, especially in Johnson County and areas like ours, we have fewer students seeking credit hours, trainings, licenses, et cetera, than we would have at that point in time in 2011. So any questions on that? This next chart is something we added to the book this year, which I think has been interesting, based on the metro rate that was established in fall of 2016. That is essentially a rate for border counties and Missouri, a discounted out-of-state rate. And so we wanted to start, I guess, focusing a little bit more on the mix of student credit hours by residency, and also looking at the tuition and fee revenue that's associated with that. So you can see here that about 73% of our credit hours, this is in last academic year, FY 1617, came from Johnson County resident students versus 17% from other counties, 5% out of state, and then 5% applicable to the metro rate.
Let me ask an unfair question of Dr. Weber. When did we put in the metro rate again? Was that for fiscal year '16?
Fiscal year '17, so it would have been fall '16-'17, yeah.
So the 5% that we indicate here, is that much higher than 16%? So, the 5 percent that we indicate here, is that much higher than 1617? Have we grown any? I think we have.
We did grow, because we projected trying to hit about 10, 15 percent the first year for credit hours. We ended up growing it by like 113 percent for credit hours, so it's grown.
Can we create a new cavalier and call him Truman? Let's proceed, please.
Okay. So, again, 73 percent of the credit hours and 65 percent of the tuition revenue, again, and that's driven by the differential rates. So, I think as we're, you know, talking about different tuition pricing strategies, this kind of information is helpful in that, in those analyses. Tuition and fees, for comparative purposes, we've typically shown the rates at KU, K-State, and also metropolitan community colleges over in Missouri. The top charts on this page, just a reminder again, that the rates for JCC will stay consistent in 2018 with where they're at now, and actually, that will be the third consecutive year that we've been able to hold tuition and fees flat. The next series of charts are, again, historical looks at tuition and fees. This has the tuition rate broken out in blue, and then the mandatory fees in the green shaded areas, so you can see those changes over time. The next page are the resident rates, which of course are higher than the in-county, and then the out-of-state rates on page 25.
Rachel, maybe you said it, did you go over KCK? You have MCC, but...
We did metropolitan, I didn't put KCK in the analysis, but they are in a few pages. We do have some there.
Okay, later on, yeah. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
With regards to student, to student fees per credit hour, just a reminder, these fee rates haven't changed in a number of years, but this revenue does not go into the general fund. The student activity fee, for example, goes into the student activity fee fund, which is used for scholarships and programming, student clubs and organizations, athletics, et cetera. So, when we're talking about that budgeted 2 percent reduction in student credit hours, yes, that impacts the revenue in the general fund, but it also impacts the fee revenue in these other funds as well. That will also go down by 2 percent, meaning that there will be fewer dollars available for those, those sorts of things, if that's how the enrollment works out. Debt reduction fee is funding that's directed towards repayment of the college's revenue bond debt. Parking and roads fees are used to maintain our parking lots and parking garages, and then, of course, the sustainability fee, which has been in place since 2010, is used to fund the various sustainability initiatives around campus. A quick look at course fees, we don't have a lot of course fees when you consider the number of courses that we have, but just put these in here for, kind of as an FYI, they're primarily in our floral, horticulture programs, music lesson fees, and then in the railroad programs. This, I think, Trustee Cross gets to your question about KCK. The next two pages are the tuition rates that we pulled from K-BOR for the other, excuse me, community colleges in the state. Let me page down here. There are the JCC rates, Kansas City, Kansas Community College, right below. One interesting thing that we did with this analysis is average the in-district or resident rates for all the schools. That comes out to about $96, about $3 higher than our current rate.
Rachel, if I might, I think it's important for the trustees, we sometimes look at the tuition number, and say, oh my goodness, our tuition is quite a bit higher than some of our colleagues in the state, the community colleges. But if you look at the fees that they tack on, and Dr. Sobchak has always reminded us, Dr. Larson has always reminded us about the fee piece, when you add the fees, our fees are 17, are $16. And when you look at some of these other fees that our colleagues have around the state, they're upwards of 40, $50, and so, the total is about the same. So, let's not get caught up on just comparing tuition per credit hour, we have to look at both.
I make a motion, can we charge $132.99 for border state?
We're not honoring any motions.
We don't do pennies.
Chairman?
Yes.
Do, do we have, is there access to any information regarding the actual cost per student outside of scholarship? Because I, my understanding is, many of these other Kansas community colleges, for example, in Fort Scott, you know, they have, if, they would not have the enrollment if they didn't have some of the sports programs, is what my understanding is, and those students, I would imagine, for the, predominantly are on scholarship. So, when we look at the fees here, is, can you, can you look at this and see what the actual cost per student, as opposed in removing scholarships, so we can see what that actual impact is? I don't know if those figures out there exist, or...
We can do...
Dr. Weber, do you want to take a shot at that?
You're saying for other institutions?
Well, comparing us, what it actually costs a student here, outside of the scholarships, versus some of the other colleges, then, you know, then we may be looking at apples-to-apples here, too.
It's a little tricky, because scholarship amounts vary so much, but, and to your point on athletics, I think that that's where the tide's going to shift a little bit, because historically, where you're right, a lot of these smaller schools that use athletics as an anchor for enrollment, they scholarship tuition, but the students had to pay fee. And now, with the recent change in our, in our athletic conference, the possibility or the opportunity to scholarship fees, too, exists. So, the model has shifted, and so, unfortunately, I don't, I wouldn't have any confidence in getting you comparative numbers.
Well, I'm just curious, because as I look at these numbers, I'm trying to think, how would they actually compare, and how do they actually impact the students?
And I anticipate that we'll see some shift on a number of these schools who have used fee money to scholarship tuition. If they're no longer doing that, their tuition rates will probably start to increase rather than their fees, so they can do different general fund strategies.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
See, outside of Hutch, we're by far the lowest on fees than the rest of the community colleges. Go ahead, Rachel.
Okay. On page 30, we have just some survey information, I think it's interesting for benchmarking purposes, on public two-year colleges. The average published tuition price for 2017, this is just by state, Kansas, you'll see, is listed sixth from the bottom, sixth lowest average total cost. So, again, if you took that $96 or whatever it was for the average, multiply that by 30, you're going to come out with about that $3,000 figure. So, just kind of an interesting comparison, I think. So, that wraps up the information that I have to kind of inform the tuition and fee discussion. The last bit of stuff that we have in here about revenue is this piece on the state funding. These tables are from K-BOR, this, again, lists all the community colleges, this actually includes the technical colleges as well, and Washburn Institute of Technology. This is the 2017 and 2018 funding levels. This is the tiered technical, state operating grant, and then the non-tiered, yes?
Rachel, if I can, you'll notice in 17 and 18, it's the same exact amount. We get the same exact amount from the state regardless of how many students we have. So, if our enrollment grows, then on a per-student basis, we get less money. If our enrollment declines, then we get more money per student. So, this is a part of the challenge the state has, of trying to come up with a more equitable funding formula for community colleges that reflects what's going on today.
And if you had a column in here for fiscal 2016, obviously, between 16 into 17, we did have a 4 percent reduction, so that's about $860,000 every year that we're not getting until that would be restored.
And that's, that's a good point. When Mr. Carter comes to talk about his lobbyist report, there's an item in there about the attitude toward restoring those cuts, and we might pursue that with Dick a little bit more. Go ahead.
The next table, in addition to what's known as the operating grant, we do receive funding from the state for other initiatives, and those are listed here, including the Senate Bill 155 for career and technical education, and some capital outlay and technology grants that the college receives. All right? So, moving on from there, I do have some information I wanted to share about our budget expenditures for next year, again, kind of starting with that pie chart presentation. Our total expense budget is $157.8 million. We have changed the presentation on this slide to break out the salaries and the benefits, so the $86 million that you see in the dark blue shaded is salaries only, benefits are in green, that's about $27 million. Our current operating budget, which is $29 million, includes all of our departmental operating expenses, so supplies, travel, utilities, memberships, subscriptions, all of those sorts of things are in that category. We do have a fairly large capital allocation in the general fund next year, which includes $7 million, $7 million of funding for the facilities master plan, and then debt service as well. Similar to the revenue slide, we did do a 10-year presentation on expense trends, and again, the budget has expanded since 10 years ago. At fiscal year 2010, it was about $130 million, now we're at $158, and I think it's interesting, again, to look at the shift, you know, as a percentage of the total since that time, from salary and benefits towards the operating and capital categories.
So, Mr. Chairman, so, since you mentioned that, I have that question written down. What are we doing differently now versus 2013 to account for that 30, where's that 30 million every year going toward? And I don't need the answer now, but that's one thing I'm curious.
No, I mean, if you're talking about salaries and benefits, I mean, we have about 100 fewer full-time positions than we do.
Well, it seems to me that the trend has been cutting expenses, and credit hours are down, so that's what I'm having a disconnect. How are we, how is that budget increase every year being allocated?
The trend has been to hold, to hold costs pretty much even, other than the first year where there were some cuts made. The, you know, the challenge has been, while you hold costs, even we've still been given raises every single year. So, if you look at a base of what those salaries, those salaries are, and you add 2.75 to that or 2.5 or whatever it may be, that adds up over a number of years. And so, that's a part of that difference there. The other big number there is the capital. I mean, we've really increased capital this year because of the facilities master plan, and our operations is slightly up, and those are things that we're looking at really closely.
It's a good question, and I think probably a better slide would be that broken out, and you can actually see the increments in those different areas.
But I would add, too, that capital is a big part of this. Certainly, when we were in the recession, some very lean years, we were really slipping behind on deferred maintenance, and then when things turned around, we've been addressing ongoing maintenance capital items in addition to the really sizable investment in the facilities master plan that you're seeing with this increase in capital and in debt service.
Okay.
Excuse me, one other factor on that, if you look at the bottom of those, you'll see those are actual numbers until you get to the budgets.
Right.
And we have a tendency not to spend the budget.
Right.
So, that variance could be anywhere between 5, 7, 8 percent that we don't spend of the budget. And so, until you can see the actual breakout of the actual versus actual, that's when you can make some kind of determination about what's happening.
In fact, I think to applaud Dr. Sobchak's administration, we've, we've attempted to close that gap dramatically from what was budgeted and what was actually spent, and trying to be more realistic with the projected budget and expenditures. We budget a little tighter, is what I'm saying, since Dr. Sobchak came on board.
From there, I wanted to fast forward to page 40, just again, I've been talking primarily about the college's general fund. As a reminder, and when you see the legal budget later in the year, there are many other funds that we are required to account for and maintain in our, in our books and records. Those include the Adult Supplementary Education Fund, which is the revenues and expenses related to our continuing education unit primarily, the motorcycle and truck driver education programs, the Auxiliary Enterprise Fund, which is the self-sustaining units like the dining services and bookstore, and then the Student Activity Fund, which I mentioned earlier. That final column, Restricted Another, you will see those, there are some very large numbers in there, and that includes the funds that we are appropriating in the capital line for certain of the other facilities master plan projects. And then, in the current operating and grants, just know that what's included in there are all the grant funds that the college receives, and that does include the student financial aid, Pell Grants, and federal direct loans. So, that's why those numbers are so large, and we don't talk a lot about them individually. I think Trustee Cook, this next page talks a little bit about your comment about how we don't typically spend all of the budget. So, in fiscal 17, this is our actual spend, $135 million, about 92 percent of the budget. This year, we have $150 million operating budget, we'll probably spend about 94 percent of that. And then, again, for next year, I've estimated, you know, if we spend 98 percent of the budget, what does that look like? So, we know we have that historical trend where we're spending, you know, between 91 to 95 percent of the budget generally. So, looking at the actual is really the key. As far as the book goes, I'm going to stop there. The next few pages are a lot of detail on our different department cost centers accounts. Did you, if you have any questions on any of that based on your review, I'd be happy to answer those. Otherwise, I'd like to move on a little bit to page 71. Is that all right? Any other questions? Okay.
I would suggest, and Dr. Larson and Rachel give us your direction, as you examine this in the next 30 days, and if there are questions, should trustees refer to you or Rachel, or both? Or how do you want to do that?
I think probably calling Rachel will be just fine.
So, if you have any questions that come up, it would be good to sit down with Rachel and have her answer your questions.
Can we just tweet them?
Page 41, Rachel, that you were at before.
Oh, shoot, yes.
That's the operating budget, right?
Right, yes.
Doesn't include our cap, the capital outlay numbers that we talked about.
Correct, this is the general fund.
So, that if we spend 98 percent there, and I know that's more than we normally spend of the budget amount, that would, if you compare that to the actual spend for fiscal year, or the estimated for 2018, it's a 9 and 1/2 percent increase, 13 and 1/2 million dollars.
Yeah, but look at the capital line. I mean, it's going up to $11.7 million, because we have all of that funding in there for the facilities master plan.
Okay, so, the capital is in there, and the capital includes $4 million?
Seven.
The general fund capital includes $7 million for the facilities master plan next year.
Right, but $4 million more than we spent last year.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes. And the debt service number is going to be a little bit higher, too.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay. Let me page down here quickly. Again, this is so much detail on literally all of the departments and cost centers on campus, so if any questions come up, let us know. Page 71, again, this, this, I think, maybe will help with your question, is something we added for the facilities master plan, just because this is something new, the numbers, of course, are quite large, to provide a little bit more detail on what is appropriated for next year. And so, in the general fund, we have $7 million broken out between the gym renovation and the student center renovation, as we start on those projects. Within the Auxiliary Enterprise Fund, we've identified about a half million for student center renovation. Capital outlay fund is going to include dollars for the resource center consolidation on the first floor of the library. Then we have the arts and CTE restricted funds, and those are funded through our capital campaign and our bond financing, again, outside of the general fund. And then, the outdoor site and athletic improvements piece will be paid for with the bond financing dollars as well. So, just wanted to put that in there so that everyone could see that those, those dollars are all going to be appropriated in the 1819 budget. Okay? From here, the next several pages is what we call our capital schedule, and this is a listing of every single budgeted item over $5,000 that falls within the capital category for next year. So, again, I guess I would pause here and see if you have any questions based upon your review, be happy to try to answer those.
If not, they, again, can call you on that.
Good enough. Just a couple more things in here. Moving to the back, again, starting on page 87, we have the five-year financial model and projection, which I talked about earlier, and I just wanted to let everyone know this is in here, if you're interested in reviewing it. This is what was shared with the management committee, of course, back in the fall, when we first started talking about the budget and the parameters associated with that. And then, a couple pieces of supplemental information that I think are interesting that we use to do some benchmarking, including the IPEDS information that we get through the U.S. Department of Education's annual survey of colleges and universities. So, we do look at this historical data over time to benchmark ourselves against other institutions, and look at our spending by IPEDS category. Then we also have our composite financial indicator, and I really wanted to talk about this because our site visit is coming up with the Higher Learning Commission, and this piece of information is very similar to a ratio that we provide to the HLC, and that they look at when they're assessing the financial strength of the institution. Again, if you're on the management committee, you've seen this before, you're probably pretty familiar with this presentation, it's been done annually for the past several years. I think this is a really good way to kind of simplify, you know, various ratios, and look at the composite financial indicator, or score, of how well the college is managing its reserves, managing its debt, and maximizing its year-over-year operations. So, again, our score is, you know, well within the ideal range that's been established. This tool has been around since the late 1990s, and is very common in higher education as a, as a benchmarking tool, and a way for boards and others to assess the financial health without digging into a 100-page budget document, for example. a 100-page budget document, for example. Okay.
Rachel, is that it? You're done. Thanks. Let me say again, as you consider your decision-making process going forward in the next 30 days, and as we come up to May, I believe this slide right here is really telltale in terms of how we're doing with our, with our colleagues in the nation. And, and we didn't get to this point over nine years, 10 years, of being in the ideal range by accident. And so it was a dedicated effort by our departments when they build budgets, a dedicated commitment by our whole financial administrative team and our administration to make sure that when you look at those four core areas, primary reserve viability, net operating revenue, and return on net assets, that's all a collective, a collection of good decision-making. And, and this board, one of their primary responsibilities is fiduciary. So appreciate your comments tonight and the seriousness in which you take this. But, but, and it's not easy, Trustee Snyder, to predict what's going to be in the future of Trustee Cross in terms of how are we going to predict what other governmental agencies, how they behave in making decisions for, for support. So I want to compliment everybody for, over the years, for being in this range. And certainly, Trustee Lindstrom made the comment about commending the administrative staff and from the management team, and appreciate what the management team does, because you deal even with more detail on this on a monthly basis. So with that, if you have questions with this, call Rachel and/or Barbara, but Rachel is kind of the key point here, and then we'll further discuss this in May. Trustee Lindstrom.
Well, I want to just reemphasize again, and I appreciate you making that comment about my observation, but I have been continually impressed with the financial management of this institution, particularly with Dr. Larson and Rachel. I really am impressed with their work.
Good. Dr. Sopczik, you have a comment?
I was just going to ask Rachel. Rachel, after you had that CFI, what happens with the debt we've taken? How's that thing going to look next, next year?
Yeah, so we also use that spreadsheet to kind of calculate going forward. And based upon the fact that we took on $50 million of additional indebtedness last fall, we will see that viability ratio drop down. And I can't remember the exact number, but we know that it will come down from 6.94 to some smaller number, but we're still able to manage it within the ideal range. And then, of course, that will hopefully be able to trend back upwards as we pay down the debt and continue to manage reserves.
Okay.
So yes, it's also a good tool for kind of predictive modeling.
You know, one, Rachel, one thing we didn't mention was the early, the early payoff of the debt issue for 2009. You might just want to mention that.
Yes. So within the debt service budget in the general fund, and I talked about this at management committee on Wednesday of last week, is that we had proposed an early retirement of the Series 2009 certificates of participation, which were issued when OHEC was built. And so it's about another $1.5 million that we'll budget this year, but we estimate interest savings of around $50,000 if we're able to go ahead and do that. So, yes. Did you have a question?
I did, but I forgot what it was. Oh, I do, I remember what it was. I think it's important to remind folks, and remind me, because I don't remember. What was, we borrowed a lot of money, it sounds like a lot of money to a taxpayer, I'm sure, $50 million. What was the interest rate that we achieved?
2.89.
Yes.
2.89%. So that's, that's the investment.
The 20-year term.
A 20-year term. So that's the investment that we made at a time when the bond market was, was about as good as you could get. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I, again, wanted to just touch on, and you talked about this a little bit, Dr. Cook, at the beginning, the remaining timeline will include a vote on the budget in May. In July, we will vote to publish a notice of public hearing and to hold the hearing in August. And that is the time where the public may come to the board and ask questions about the legal budget. After that, we file the documents with the county and the state by, I think, the 25th of August is the filing deadline. And then, moving into the fall, of course, the tax bills are finalized, and we'll know the final, final levy amount and any changes from there. So that's it.
Trustee Snyder.
Would you like to go over what has been the norm for discussions about the budget? So next month, for instance, you're not looking for people to say, well, I think, you know, Culinary should get an extra $1 million, and that should come from whatever. You're basically looking for an up-down vote, perhaps discussion on the mill levy and things like that.
That's really not the role of the board. I mean, that's the administration's recommendations to the board. We don't, if we start getting into that, we'll be shifting a million there and a million here. It'll be like the federal government, and I don't think we're like that. So that's the, that's how we do it.
Now, if, on the other hand, you come across a source of revenue for a million dollars, for example, that I think you just cited, Kate Allen is in charge of our foundation, and it would be a nice gesture to make that donation to the foundation. Okay, thanks. Thanks for all your work, Rachel. And again, if you have questions, I would encourage you to visit with Rachel the next 30 days regarding that.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you, Rachel.
The next item on the budget, on the agenda is the open forum. We moved the open forum as close as we anticipated to 5:00 in case there were people that assumed our board meeting would start at 5:00. And the open forum is an agenda item at each regularly-scheduled board meeting. Speakers must register by completing this registration form prior to the open forum agenda item, giving their name, city of residence, and any group that are representing the topic in a brief one or two sentence summary of the presentation. Each registered speaker is allotted five minutes to speak behind the podium. If there are a significant number of registered voters, the time will be reduced for each registered speaker. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. Personal insults, profanity, or language that is not appropriate to be aired live on television, and offensive comments based on protected status or class are prohibited. The chair of the board has the authority to keep order and impose reasonable restrictions. There are no registered speakers tonight, so I will close the open forum closed. Student Senate report, Biz Buhamah. And what a great luncheon today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Another PowerPoint. That's two in a row.
Sorry. That's not what I intended to do.
A slideshow from the beginning.
All right. Good evening. So tonight I have a student senate logo, the new logo draft. I will talk a little bit about our elections, the clothing pantry, and updates on the initiatives. You can see our current student senate logo. We didn't change it for a while. So this is the first draft. We are keeping the colors of GCCC logo and also the petals. This is the second and third. These are the three drafts that we have right now. They have been done by students, two students, and we'll try next month to decide on the final. Elections. Today was the last day to, for students to vote on the incoming senators and executive officers for next fall. So every, the elections, we'll send through, through the emails, email to all students. It's basically like a survey that they need to, they have the opportunity to vote either yes or no for each candidate. Candidate, they have the opportunity to select two different seats. So we have some names that are the same for a couple of positions. The total would be eight senators returning for next fall, which means we're missing 22 senators that we are looking for. That's just to explain the high turnover that we have in the student senate. Clothing pantry. We created an ad hoc committee this month, and we are looking to see if we can have a business clothing pantry adding to some winter clothes. This is just a picture from Google. We wish we to have the same on campus. We already have some clubs and organizations who wants to manage, who are interested in managing the clothing pantry, and we are looking for a space. So if you have any ideas about a space, please reach out to us. Updates on initiatives. We started the initiatives in January, and specifically coming, we asked ourselves two questions. Is there an added value for students? If yes, what is the cost for the college? And then, we consider to move forward with the initiative or not. One of the most important initiatives that we have this semester is the student healthcare, student health insurance. So the Midwestern Higher Education Compact is encouraging higher education institutions to have health insurance for their students. Right now, we have our athletic students and international students having health insurance through the college, and we are looking to expand that to all the students' population if possible. United Healthcare Students Resource seems to be the provider that most of Kansas is using. Here is kind of a screenshot of the Kansas Board of Regents and the list of universities and colleges that use the United Healthcare Student Resources. There is no, in Kansas, there is no community college or a two-year college who does that. Conventionally, maybe colleges, two-year colleges don't, don't have the health insurance, but out of Kansas, many do. This is an example for Lake Region State College. And the policy here, domestic student plan, that's the one we are looking for. Medical International and Athletes, this is the two that we already have on our campus. So hopefully, we kind of, these all are like students research. And when we reach out to the Midwestern Higher Education Compact, they said they would give information to the administration, but not to students. So there is no other information that we could be asking for. Other campuses, they also have vision and dental, but for now, I think it would be great if we have student domestic. Updates on other initiatives, academic seats in student senate. I think we, over a month ago, we met with the jeans, so we're still looking for feedback regarding increasing student senate involvement. I'd like to say thank you to the Faculty Association and Faculty Senate. They allow us to, during the meeting, to talk a little bit about student involvement on campus. Increasing student senate visibility, we have a Spirit Award for the clubs. It is kind of added to the clubbies. Every, every spring semester, we have less awards dedicated to special events or students or club. They, they kind of did a lot to student involvement on campus. And to reform inter-club council, we had a luncheon, and we invited all clubs. 20 clubs attended, and it went really well, so we'll probably do that again. And that concludes my report.
Trustee Larson.
What is some other requirements to be a senator?
So, to be senator, there is not much requirement, but to be an officer, it's different. We need to be a full-time student, to have at least 12 credit hours, and to have, to maintain certain GPA. I think it's 2.5.
Are there benefits that come with being an officer or senator?
Yes. Senator, probably not, other than the experience and learning and having a very understanding how communities work, and Robert's rules, for example. But being an executive officer, yes, we have our 12 credit tuition paid for.
Thank you very much. And again, you were featured today at lunch for the International Student Studies Luncheon. And it was refreshing to hear, for those of you that weren't there, we have 1,300 international students from 106 countries. And I think with the student senate's leadership and the testimony we heard today, they're just really pleased to be a part of our community college, and that you and the student senate have really done a lot, along with our faculty, in helping those international students feel they're a part of our community college. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
And they pay more in tuition, correct? International students?
Yes.
They have.
College lobbyist report. Mr. Carter.
I do not have a PowerPoint, so you'll have to look at me. And if you get really bored, there's no punchline, sorry.
Trustee Cook.
The good news is, we are continuing the trend of increased revenues at the end of each month. Again, that's all due in part to the passage of the tax policy change last legislative session. Individual income tax receipts are the trend that keeps showing up and in an upwards motion, and sales tax numbers keep reflecting down. Those numbers are year-to-date. It's all good news, given the heavy decisions that we still have yet to do in this legislative session. It's almost a legislative session that never started, because there's considerable amounts of business left to, to deal with when the legislature comes back for their nine-day veto session. The first adjournment came Saturday evening, Sunday morning, depending on when you were looking at the clock and which body was finishing their action. They were set to finish their business on April 6th, which was Friday, needed to pass an adjournment resolution that allowed them to extend into the next day, as well as set the time for the final adjournment. It was a series of procedural motions that came up in the Senate. At, at one point, there was some concern whether or not the Senate would run an adjournment motion, if they, adjournment resolution. If they did not, all unfinished work would be lost. Anything that the governor had not signed would be finished. This is the end of a two-year legislative cycle. And so with some procedural motions in the evening of Friday night, the Senate passed an adjournment resolution, sent it over to the House, and that stretched out clear almost to the, to the end of the day. And it was within the last couple of minutes of the day that there was confirmation that the House had passed the, the resolution that the Senate had sent over, giving them the extra time to do the work. We can talk a little bit about what that looked like later on in the report, if you're interested. But I think the key point is, there's no budget yet. And that should have concluded, or that should have been taken care of by this past weekend. That did not. The Senate had passed their version of the budget. The House has a budget that came out of the Appropriations Committee, but was never debated on the, on the House floor. And typically, what happens when you come back for the veto session, you take up the items that are considered in the omnibus budget, those things that were pushed off till the very end. We got into a, a little bit of a pattern during the, the tough years when Kansas experienced some financial downturns, where we were doing the entire budget at the, in the omnibus. We are now going to be revisiting that process. And that's a little bit concerning, because it, it's not starting over, but it's almost like starting over. Many of the things that have been agreed to, I think, are back on the table. Some of the things that relate to higher education that were put off to omnibus, I've listed in the, the report here that's before you. Most importantly to us, I think, is the restoration of the cuts that were made in fiscal year 2017. The Senate had included in their budget at one point 75% restoration of those funds. Those, that amount was pulled out for discussion at omnibus. The House does not have a position on that. They did not include that in their budget. And so that will be one of the things that we're talking about in the conference committee process, when the two committees sit across from each other, the leadership of both committees, and they hammer out the differences in the, in their bills. My hope is that the Senate holds strong and that we see some of that restoration. But again, we're dealing with the entire budget now versus just wrapping up at the end of the session. The, one of the things that...
Dick, I have a question about that, if I can. So on the budget, so traditionally, the budgets go through the House and Senate, and you can have a lot of floor debate, and then they pass that part of it, and then come back and do this omnibus like you're talking about. So under this process you're describing, will it only be a conference committee report that the House and Senate vote on, or will... Or will it be a free-for-all for people to amend it, a budget at some point?
I don't think we know yet.
Okay.
And I think that part of that change will be coming back with nine days left, an $80, $80 million error in the K-12 finance bill, and a tax plan that was passed by the Senate that takes all of the money, that I think many of the legislators, at least in the House, thought they would be using to finance that, that K-12 plan. So, I don't think we know. I think, I think it's kind of like starting over. We'll be revisiting a lot of those issues. It likely will be a conference committee process that the budget is handled in, but I can't predict that right now, not knowing all the details of, of what the consensus revenue estimates look like on April 20th, I think, is when that group's getting together. I mean, there's just so many moving parts that, that are left to figure out where we're, where we're going to end up finally. With regard to the National Guard tuition or the National Guard scholarship, that is something that the college was supportive of when it was moving through, the bill was moving through the process. The Senate, the House recommends the full amount that was included in the governor's budget recommendations. The Senate recommended half of that amount. So, again, back to the, the comment that trustee Snyder made, that's one of those types of things that will be working out in the final analysis, most likely in a, in a conference committee process. The, the good news is that both the House and Senate included the governor's budget recommendations for bumping up the CTE funding levels, both in FY '18 and in '19. And if I recall, the, the governor's budget recommendations, we're looking at a five-year track for those numbers, but we're dealing with a two-year budget cycle, and that's, those are the numbers that will be bumping up in '18 and '19. With regard to K-12 finance, as you're aware, and as it's been published in, in many papers and talked about in media outlets, the legislature had until the 30th of April to pass a bill, get it signed by the governor, and over to the court for their review. I think there was some question as to whether or not that would happen on Friday, April 6th. The, the Senate was taking quite a bit of time talking about a tax bill that had worked through their committee. And it wasn't until the Senate Vice President made a procedural motion to stop that debate and, and get to the work about passing an adjournment resolution and talk about when they would be taking up the school finance piece in the Senate. In the end, the, the Senate did concur to a $525 million K-12 finance bill over a five-year period. I think there still are some questions about all of the items that are in it, but that is the plan that the governor encouraged both bodies to pass. He indicated he would sign it and send it over to the court at the appropriate time. We've since learned earlier this week that there was an $80 million error in the K-12 finance bill. I don't know that anyone has figured out exactly all the details or can explain it to you. I think Dale Dennis at KSDE can. I, don't ask me, because I don't know that I can. I do think it has to do with the way the local option budget and the mill levy is combined under the base for the students.
So, was it a shortfall in revenue, or was it a miscalculation of the appropriation?
I believe it was a miscalculation in the way, in the way that the bill was written. And so, that's something that will need to be taken up, again, in that nine-day period when legislators come back. The Senate, like I said, passed a tax plan. It eats up a lot of the revenue that I think the state was planning on using to fund this increase in, in K-12 funding. If you'll recall, earlier in the session, I, I reported to you that a group of accountants had given a, an update to the Joint Tax Committee on what the federal tax policy looked like. And it was about $138, $140 million for the state of Kansas, based on the new standard deductions taken at the federal level, if the state did not do anything. Part of the action in the Senate was they decoupled from the federal tax policy. They did do some increases in the standard deductions here, but also restored some of the itemized deductions that were swept away in the 2012 big tax change that, that we reversed in 2017. So, I think that that bill also has only passed the Senate. It has not been talked about in the House. I don't think the House will even take it up at this point. But, but don't think that the Senate's done. I, I think that we'll still be having, again, that part of the conversation when everyone comes back on April 26th. The concurrent enrollment piece is another item that I've talked about most of this session. That was included in the Senate's education bill when they sent it out of their body. And it would have been a pilot program for one year, $1.5 million for English Comp, English Comp 1. And that would have been across the state for all post-secondary institutions, as we understand it. Now, when the House amended the education bill on the floor, that part came out. And when they sent the bill back to the Senate, that and a number of other things were out of the education bill. And so, as, as it stands right now, we are not talking about a concurrent enrollment pilot program at all, and it's sort of business as usual, if you will. I think it's important that we talk a little bit about the constitutional amendment. Again, you've seen that floating around in the media outlets, and that, that is something that I think will become a larger part of the conversation when legislators return for the omnibus slash veto session. The, the optics are a little strange. The, the resolution was introduced before the House or Senate had adopted an education finance bill. And essentially, the constitutional amendment would put language on a ballot that indicates the legislature has the final say, not the court, in what a suitable amount of funding for K-12 education is. I mean, that's it in a nutshell. The, the initiative has developed into a coalition led mostly by ag interests, as well as the construction industry. And the Kansas Chamber is also a part of that coalition that is seeking to, to advance the constitutional amendment. The Attorney General addressed the Judicial Committee, where the, where the resolution found its, its initial life, and indicated that he thought that the people of Kansas wanted the opportunity to vote on a constitutional amendment. So, you have all of those forces at play right now in the, in the House and Senate. The constitutional amendment would take 84 votes in the House, 27 in the Senate. So, that's considerably more than 63 and 21. That's a, also a veto-proof majority. At that point, then, again, if it, if it passes muster in the process, that's already veto-proof. The governor signs it or doesn't sign it and becomes law, and, and it would be on a ballot at some point in the future, most likely in the fall, if that occurs. I've included in my report the resolution so that you can see what the ballot language would look like. I don't think that that's what the final version will look like. Several people have indicated that there are some changes that need to be made to the, to the constitutional amendment language, and I don't know what those changes look like. I've not seen any amendments drafted, but that's just something that we're, that we're hearing right now. With regard to dark store theory, and that's, again, is, is a topic that has come up off and on throughout this spring session, there still is no bill. There have been a number of informational presentations made in the Senate Tax Committee only. The House knows very little about this, other than just what they're hearing from, from different folks as they talk about it. There still are a number of cases before the Board of Tax Appeals, and I think that there will be some additional judicial review after some of those cases are, are done. That does not mean that we should not continue to be very aware of what, what that conversation looks like, in so much as that I think that there will be some meetings occurring here in the very near future with the county about what it would look like should some of the revenues that we've taken in through the mill levy would need to be returned if the Board of Tax Appeals, or if there is a change in the way a property owner receives a decision from the Board of Tax Appeals. So, that's, that is something that's very, that we need to be very aware of as you're making decisions about, about the overall budget for the college. Right in the, in the last couple of days of the session, Senate Bill 459 was introduced. It is a, a bill that would establish a property and sales tax committee review group. That bill had a quick hearing in the Senate Tax Committee. It's not been acted upon. It could be one of those things that we see worked into a conference committee report or talked about in the final days of the, of the veto session. Again, it doesn't have any weight of policy change. It would simply be a, a committee that's reviewing property tax and, and sales tax issues before the, as it relates to policy, I should say. So, what do the next steps look like? The adjournment resolution indicates that legislators will return on April 26th. They will adjourn signee die on May 4th. Now, that's a little bit of a different process than what we're normally used to. Typically, when the legislature adjourns, or what we call the final adjournment, there's a, a several-week period stuck in there, and then they come back for a, more of a formality that is called signee die or, or adjournment signee die, which means the session is formally concluded. By adjourning signee die on May 4th, there is no opportunity for veto overrides, should the governor veto something that is passed on May 4th. Again, there's a timeline that starts, a clock that starts ticking after legislation is passed, when it gets to his desk. He has so many days, there are so many days to get the bill to his desk, there are so many days that he has to review it. And, and so, by, by not having that extra time and then the final formal closure of the, the legislature sets up a little bit of a, a game of strategy, if you will. And so, that's what we're looking at at this point. Now, having said that, when legislators come back for the veto session, they could draft another adjournment resolution or another resolution that, that could be passed that perhaps does put in an extended period of time where there would be that opportunity to override a veto, should one, should one occur. I think that, that pretty much captures everything that, that we have left to do. We, we need to pass a budget. We, we still have a $15 billion all-funds budget that needs to pass. We need to address the items that are sort of in the wrap-up or the omnibus, we, we like to call it. We still have an $80 million error to figure out how to fund, and perhaps a, a tax debate on the Senate's tax bill. Those are the, the big pieces that get us out of town, and that's a lot to do in nine days.
Questions or comments? Trustee Musel.
The Senate tax bill, because of the federal tax plan that passed, if Kansas did nothing, Kansas taxpayers would pay another $130 or $140 million. So, the Senate tried to adjust that and disconnect us, decouple us from the federal system. Are you saying that, that what the Senate did would do more than just eliminate that $130 or $140 million amount? Because you said it's taking revenues that other people wanted to spend on school finance. So, is it eating into the reserves that have been built up?
I wouldn't say that it's eating into the reserves that are being built up. It's additional money that, that came about as a result of the, the change in federal tax policy. I do think the House, many, many, many members in the House were planning on earmarking or using that money to fund the increase in the education plan.
Trustee Cross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. To trustee Musel's chagrin, Mr. Carter, I still don't understand the dark store theory, except I just read an NPR article, and it seems like it's just about commercial property owners comparing themselves to a dark store, and we should be taxed accordingly? Is that too simple? Is that?
It's, the simplistic way is it's valuing a store as if it's empty. It's dark, as opposed to any kind of ongoing business that's in it.
And so, like Lowe's in San Antonio, it looks like in stores across the country have brought this line of argument, almost as a tax revolution, to say, we don't agree with the taxes we're being appraised at, so we should get breaks, we should have lower rates, whatever.
We should have a lower valuation, which results in us paying lower taxes.
Because otherwise, we could be a dark store, or we should be taxed as a dark store. Okay. I just, thank you.
It appears that's not going to happen this year, but doesn't mean it wouldn't resurface in future years, which is what kind of happens.
If, if it does happen, it'll cost us $10 million for every year.
So, let's cut the mill.
Any other questions of Mr. Carter? Thank you, Dick. Appreciate it very much, and go forward, whatever that means. Next item, committee reports and recommendations. The first is collegial steering. Collegial steering did meet on Tuesday, April 3rd, at 4:00 PM. We had four or five items on the agenda. Dr. Larson gave a update on, an update on the rental book issue discussion, follow-up on what we're doing to help students with the rental book procedure. Dr. Sobchak gave an update on the HLC visit, Higher Learning Commission visit, and that will take place the last day of April into the first couple of days of May. And I think that we are duly prepared for the visit, as much as duly prepared can be. Melanie Harvey gave a detailed update on the faculty development equip project, and a lot of people have spent a lot of time in the detail work of, of getting that up to speed, and really appreciate that effort. Dr. McLeod gave a follow-up statement on academic freedom, and I think we've put that discussion maybe to bed now for a while, and we'll just let the process work out. We gave an assignment for, for next month's meeting, including trustees. Trustee Ingram, of course, attends that as well. And we've challenged each organization to identify two or three strategies or activities they do that add value to the college. So, trustee Ingram's homework assignment is what do trustees do that add value to the effective, efficient operation of Johnson County Community College? So, we'll look forward to, to that discussion and see if anybody shows up. I'm just kidding. Dr. Arjo will maybe make a comment about that in his report. Human resources, trustee Cross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Human Resources Committee did not meet this month. We will meet next month on May 7th.
Thank you. Learning quality, trustee Lawson.
During our committee meeting, we listened to several presentations that are listed in your board packet. I won't go over those. The final presentation on the math scores brought up some questions from the trustees, as well as opinions on the impact of the ACT and testing on math placement by members of the math department. The math department has a group that meets regularly to review and continually assess their curriculum to make sure that students are successfully placed in the right math courses. The questions that were brought up in our meeting revolved around the ACT scores linked to admissions to college algebra, where the cutoff is currently at 25 ACT. This ACT requirement gives JCC the highest required test results for placement of any college or university in the state, which brought up concerns of being exclusive. Trustee members pointed out that the University of Kansas has a requirement of 22 ACT, as an example. Trustees believe that this is a conflict with our mission of accessibility, Kansas Board of Regents standards, and our board statement of principle. We understand and appreciate that this is a very sensitive issue. The Board of Trustees here believes the policy already is in place and indicated that we should avoid exclusionary standards which may conflict with the growth of our college. As such, we would like to see a decision made that align with the Board of Trustees of Regents, and look forward to a resolution that is in line with making sure our college is available to our students. I have hoped that as we keep track of student performance data, that we share and evaluate our results in comparison to the math department outcomes statewide. And open that up to any of the other fellow trustees on that committee.
Well, I, it was a continuation of the discussion that started last fall, and I think it was good. We appreciated the presentation by members of the math department. It's a, it's a, it's a subject area that deserved discussion and debate. I don't think it deserved the level of controversy that was raised last year when we decided, when the administration decided on the side of accessibility and admissions for students. I think what, what came out of our committee meeting was a, a decision to support accessibility to students and to, if we're going to have data-driven decisions, get better and more data to justify, at a community college, an ACT score three points higher than it, what is considered by some to be the flagship university in our state. So, I'm, I'm certainly supportive of what trustee Lawson just reported.
Trustee Snyder, you're in that committee as well. Any comments you have?
Nothing additional.
Mr. McLeod, did you have anything?
No, I, it's been communicated to me pretty clearly that the action that needs to be taken is that administratively, we need to look at aligning ourselves better with the mission of access. It's my, I understand clearly, you know, that the Board of Trustees would like for us to really look carefully at that and make sure that we align ourselves appropriately. And I take that as my responsibility to make that happen.
I think what I'm hearing, you say trustee Lawson and trustees Musel and Snyder, is that that's an-
that that's an administrative function, and we, as trustees, support the administrative function with the work that Dr. McLeod's going to do to carry out that activity. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Very good. Any other comments from Learning Quality?
We have recommendations, but those are in the consent agenda, so we'll move forward on those when we get to that point.
Any questions or comments from trustee Lawson? Thank you very much. Management, trustee Lindstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have, my report is a little bit lengthy tonight, so I apologize in advance. I also will be having four recommendations to make. The management committee met at 8:00 AM on Wednesday, April 4th, right here in the boardroom. Information related to that meeting begins on page 5 and runs through page 26 of the board packet. The management committee received several presentations from staff. First presentation was from Denise Griffey, Director of Early College, Director of Early College Community Outreach and STEM, presented information on agreements with area high schools for concurrent enrollment partnerships. There was also an agreement with several school districts on shared funding and facility use. This agreement information can be found on the consent agenda, in the consent agenda, pages 56 to 59 of the board packet. Our next report was from Rachel Leers, Associate Vice President and Financial Services Chief Financial Officer, providing information about the 2018-2019 budget development, which was mentioned earlier in our budget workshop. She recommended an adjustment to the guidelines related to ad valorem, property tax, and revision and a further reduction in the mill levy due to better-than-expected property assessments within Johnson County, and again, that's something that we discussed earlier in this meeting. Jim Fieker, Director of Procurement Services, presented a summary report on procurement card activity from the past year, and better known as the P Card Program, provides the means to accomplish smaller-dollar purchases in a more efficient manner. He also presented a sole source, as well as a summary of awarded bids between $25,000 and $100,000, which can be found on page 7 of the board packet. Jeff Allen was standing in for Rex, and Rex, welcome back. But Jeff Allen, Director of Campus Services and Energy Management, gave a monthly report, monthly update on the capital infrastructure projects, and this report can be found on page 16 of the board packet. He also reviewed the report on the financial status of facilities master plan projects, and that report is in your packet on page 17. We also received an overview of progress on two buildings, two new buildings, the Career and Technical Education Building, and the Fine Arts and Design Studio from Dr. Larson. We appreciated that. And then finally, we received a report from Tom Pagano, Vice President for Information Services and Chief Information Officer. He provided a quarterly update on projects in Information Services. This report begins on page 18 of the packet. Tom also provided an excellent report on the college's cybersecurity initiatives for fiscal year 2019. And as I mentioned earlier, the management committee has four recommendations to present this evening. The first recommendation has to do with signature authority for certain financial operations of the college. The following individuals listed as authorized signers, Dr. Gerald L. Cook, our chairman, Mr. Gerald L. Cross Jr., our treasurer, Dr. Joseph Sobchak, our president, and Dr. Barbara A. Larson, Executive Vice President, Finance and Administrative Services. Therefore, it is a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to designate the aforementioned individuals as authorized signers for the college accounts, and I'll make that motion.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Musel, seconds. Any questions or discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There were three recommendations on requests for proposals, or RFPs, and bids. The first was a recommendation for an RFP for international student group health insurance, health and accident insurance program. And it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the low proposal of $110.32 per student, per month, from the LURE Agency Incorporated, a total expenditure not to exceed $300,000 for international student group health and accident insurance program, and I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Ingram, seconds. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The next was a bid for Johnson County Community College office and classroom renovations, and it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $734,300 from Straub Construction Incorporated, plus an additional $69,299 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen cost, for a total expenditure not to exceed $803,599 for office and classroom renovations, and I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Musel, seconds. Any discussion? Fall in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, it was the final recommendation for active learning classroom renovations, technology purchase, and it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the acceptable low bids and contract pricing of $178,981.21 from SKC Communications, $2,032.16 from Signal Perfection Limited, $19,020 from Computer Comforts Incorporated, and $20,460 from Kansas City Audio Visual, plus an additional $24,037.32 to allow for contingencies for unforeseen technology costs, for a total expenditure not to exceed $244,530.69 for active learning classrooms, technology, and I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, trustee Cross, seconds.
Second.
Seeing I missed you on the last one. Would you second that, trustee Cross?
Second.
Any questions? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize for the length of report. We had a lot of work to get done, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much, trustee Lindstrom. President's report, treasurer's report, trustee Cross.
Thank you so much. Two different apparatuses, and it's user error. I apologize for the delay. The treasurer's report, Mr. Chair, is contained in the board packet, and this is the report for the month ended February 28, 2018. Some items of note include, page one of the treasurer's report is the General Post-Secondary Technical Education Fund summary. February was the eighth month of the college's 2017-18 fiscal year. An ad valorem property tax distribution, $3.8 million was received in March, and will be reflected in next month's report. The college's unencumbered cash balance as of February 28, 2018, in all funds, was $122.6 million, which is approximately $14.2 million higher than at this time last year. Expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits, and therefore, Mr. Chair, it is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the treasurer's report for the month ended February 28, 2018, subject to audit. And I so move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Lindstrom, seconds. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I just want to add, I have a new laptop that's three, four months old. I thank you for aiding me. I still haven't figured out how to use it. I apologize.
You are most welcome. You have to thank Ms. Schlist for that. Monthly report to the board, Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, trustee Cook. First of all, I'd like to thank leadership of trustee Lawson, as well as trustee Snyder and Musel for their role on the Learning Quality Committee. We appreciate the confidence that you've demonstrated in administration. We look forward to moving forward, and I think it's in the best interest of the students and families in Johnson County, so thank you. I'd also like to express appreciation to Rachel and Barbara for the presentation on the budget. Barbara's very modest, and Rachel would be too, in acknowledging the work of literally hundreds of people in pulling this together. It's a lot of money, and it takes a lot of people to make this work, and we're very, very thankful that you're in these roles. This past month, the president's monthly report, if you haven't read it, I think it's one of the most voluminous, and actually, one of the most exciting. And I was trying to figure out how to lay some of these things out, but I did pick a few highlights. And we'll start with HLC. This past week, several of us were in Chicago, meeting with HLC representatives, our ALO, which is our accreditation liaison officer, and I got to spend about an hour with the chair of the site committee, talking about the upcoming visit. I can assure you, it will be a rigorous and thorough visit, but we're very excited about what the prospects for that will be. Also, I'd like to recognize John and Sherry for their role. When you go to a conference with John and Sherry, there is very little room for anything else but nose to the grindstone, and it was extremely productive. One of the points I wanted to raise here was your hard work on the quality update and federal compliance documents that you submitted. I guess that went to the HLC. That was 2,047 pages. So just a day in the life of John and Sherry in generating reports. When you flip through these pages, as I did, I was really pumped up to see the incredible outreach into the community, into the high schools, and employers by our current technical faculty and staff. Industrial technology, construction management, automotive technology, electronics technology, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning technology, electrical technology, they were out at so many different schools and doing so many things. I'd like to recognize Dr. McLeod in his role, and Richard Ford as well, for his. That's really exciting as we prepare to move into that new building. Job well done. I want to note the work of Heather Seitz. Heather is the Associate Professor of Sciences, and she was a keynote presenter at the Regional American Society of Microbiology in the Missouri Valley, and she also had a student with her that she's been supervising named Faith Higgins. Faith's project was "The Search for Novel Antimicrobials and Endophytic Bacteria," spoken like a true liberal arts person. Faith took second place at that conference, a community college student. She was the only community college student to present. That's a real commendation for the work of Heather in making this happen. Also, the JCCC Engineering and Math Club hosted the Regional Science Olympiad on February 24th, with 1,000 students from 50 Kansas middle-high schools here. Really exciting to be on campus when they're running around. The SBDC Center, who had the Kansas Legislature honor two of their clients as part of the 2018 Kansas SBDC Existing, Emerging, and Exporting Small Business Awards. These two companies are the KC Restoration LLC, which won the Emerging Business of the Year, and the Angel Competition Bikinis Existing Business of the Year. Fine work by the SBDC folks up there to make that happen, to be recognized across the state. So that was incredible. We're going to be hosting, as we've done in the past, a three-judge panel from the Kansas Court of Appeals. They'll be on our campus for two sessions of oral agreements. Those will be heard on April 17th. It's always an honor to host such a group. We've also recently hosted the American Naturalization Ceremony in Yardley Hall. It was on March 14th. We had over 400-plus new citizens sworn in on that day. We're going to be expanding our involvement with this group, as we will now host two of these a year. I'm also very proud to say that our own Sunitha Menon, the Assistant Professor and Director of the Science Resource Center, was one of those who was sworn in as an American citizen. Recently, we hosted the Kansas City Regional Model United Nations Conference. We had over 300 students from the metro area, coming from as far away as St. Louis in Bentonville, Arkansas. Kudos to Dr. Brian Wright, and congratulations to our Model UN team for their outstanding showing at the National Model UN Conference in New York City. I'd like to recognize some of the members of that team. President Allison Colser, Gardner, Kansas; Alexis Newton, Overland Park; Jasmine Birch, Shawnee; Deegan Kingery, Overland Park; Michael Mahon, Prairie Village; Anthony DiMarco, Prairie Village; Molly King; Miriam; Joshua Havacamp, Burn, Kansas; Colin Ariens, Kansas City, Missouri; Megan Heaney, Westwood Hills, Kansas; Ethan Payton, Lewisburg; Joshua Toy, Olathe; Shelby Ott, Olathe; Bradley Hervey, Lugano, Switzerland. I bet he's a ringer, too. And Jesse White from Paola; and Marianne Bakit, Overland Park; and Harrison Manlove from Olathe. What a great representation of Johnson County across that team. We should all be so proud. Lastly, I would like to report to the board that I was nominated to serve on the Governor's Education Council. This is a group of around 30 individuals from around the state, whose mission will be to improve and advance education in Kansas, and we will start meeting on Monday. And that closes my report. Any questions?
You want to talk about funding?
For the state?
Yeah, for education.
I think I'm on there because of our reserves.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Dr. Sobchak. Any questions or comments from Dr. Sobchak? I do not believe we have any old business or new business. Reports from board liaisons. Dr. Arjo, you're up first. Faculty Association.
Good evening, and thank you, as always, for the chance to address the board administration. A couple of things before I get to, some comments about the Faculty Association, where we are. First, regarding the budget, let me add faculty to expressing our appreciation for the very hard work that goes into that. It's clearly been done in a highly professional and transparent way, and that is very much appreciated. As you probably would guess, faculty have some interest in the budget, along with most people living in the county, and I do feel I could register some concern I've heard. I'm not going to pretend that there's a single faculty position on things like adjusting the mill levy, but not surprisingly, that is something I've heard people talk about. A lot of faculty are homeowners in Johnson County, so there's going to be different sides. But I'll just echo the concerns that were expressed by trustees Lawson and Cross about perhaps making a financial decision that will have ramifications into the future based on a single year's trends. So I think that would capture some of the worries that faculty have brought forth. I also wanted to say a little bit about the math placement issue. I'm not going to pretend to be in a position to speak for the math faculty. That's not my job. They have not come to us, asking us to speak on their behalf. I would just urge that, as we go forward with this, that we all bear in mind that the complex issue here is that really, this is a question involving two legitimate impulses that are in conflict with one another, or at least intention. One is to make sure we do not place students in classes that are not prepared for, and the other is not to exclude students from classes they are prepared for. So everybody, I think, is working sincerely with good intentions, and I know that is true of my faculty in math, so I would just urge that that not be overlooked. The next Faculty Association meeting is next week, on Thursday, and at that meeting, we're going to be closing nominations for next year's officers. I do not know what the slate's going to look like quite yet, but I do know my name is not going to be attached to the president, so this will be my last couple of months here. Tradition holds that at the next month's meeting, I will largely just announce the new president and turn over the podium to that person. So I thought I would take a little bit of time today, if you'll indulge me, to just kind of look back at the last couple of years and touch on a couple of themes that have kind of been on my mind all along. So you might recall that I became president right as we began what became known as the engagement conversation, which convened by Judy Korb, and I was part of that, and I always took that to be a first initial round of conversation about a very important question, which is, as education changes, as the college changes, as higher education changes, what is a full-time faculty? What are our responsibilities beyond the obvious of teaching and working with students? So in a lot of respects, that's kind of been a thought I'd carried with me with everything I've kind of done over the last two years, sort of whether it was advocating for faculty or evaluating... or evaluating proposals or responding to events. Trying to do so with an understanding of what it is to be a faculty member that took the charge or the challenge of that conversation to heart and to try to push faculty to be exceptional. As I sat in this position, had a chance to see many parts of the college I never did have a chance to see before. One of the great benefits of doing something like this is meeting colleagues from areas far-flung from philosophy and the liberal arts. I came away very impressed by the level of commitment that the faculty shows to their students and to this institution, and the number of things in which faculty are engaged in. Some of them show up in the president's report. Some of them, people would never put forth, do that report because they just think it's part of their ordinary job. So, I could go on and on. I started making a big list, but it was starting to get rather long. So, some of this has now become institutionalized as part of what we just do as part of our job, assessment, program review, gearing up for HLC. A lot of faculty were told they're going to have to go back to school, get new credentials as part of that process. There was some grumbling, but by and large, the response was, if that's what I need to do to be a faculty member of good standing, then I'm willing to do that, even if it's going to cost me both money and time. The number of things that faculty just do because we like being engaged in our discipline, going to conferences, sitting on boards of professional organizations, working with the KNEA. Some of us were at the Capitol last week when the debate was going on about the school funding bill, part of the army of red shirts that the KNEA is kind of known for. Nothing Else is coming up tomorrow. Some of us give up Friday night just to go talk about art among students at the Nelson Atkins Museum. If you've never been to that, I encourage you to go. It's a great event. We usually get 600, 700, 800 people to show up from the college, hear people talk about art. So, my point is that I do think we have a very talented, a very committed, a very strong faculty, and it's been my privilege to work on their behalf, represent them to the community, to the board, to the administration. And I look forward to seeing who the next president is and handing it off to them. So, thank you.
Questions or comments? Trustee Lindstrom.
Dr. Arjo, I appreciate your dedication to this institution as it relates to your leadership there. What kind of additional time did it take to serve as president of that organization?
It was a lot. It was up and down. Sometimes we're more demanding than others. Last year, some things were going on that were kind of uncommonly demanding, I think, both in terms of time and energy. So, I've, you know, I've always loved being at a college. I love to come to work. I'm just one of those people who, if I go visit a town, I go check out the local university just to walk on the campus. So, I've always been someone who gets here pretty early and stays out the day. The last two years, I've been here every day, well past 5:00, quite often, just trying to keep up with stuff. I mean, I do get some release time. I acknowledge that. Slightly lower teaching load, but it is a demanding position.
Trustee Cross?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Professor Arjo, I just wanted to commend you for the time you did put into this. Certainly, I think that I've known many of your predecessors, and the three I've served with, each of you has a different style. Yours sometimes is frankly maddening in that it is an adherence to, I think, academic integrity and being a fair person. And so, for some of us who have a different style, that's frustrating, and I mean to commend you really, because yours is an even-handed approach, and I think the Faculty Association, in my experience, does quite a bit to frankly alleviate things from the administration that go unseen and frankly unappreciated. But I do know that you put in a lot of time over the last two years. It's had ups and downs, and I just wanted to say I appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Trustee Musil.
Well, everybody's, you know, you should get a little chair to sit in, a rocking chair or something here, I suppose. But I think it's heartfelt, and I think what you touched on tonight is the strength of your service as president. The math assessment scores involve a tension between two different goals that don't fit neatly, and you've always approached those with reason and thought and analysis and advocacy for the Faculty Association position. That's exactly what you're supposed to do, and I've appreciated it greatly, so that we can try to find ways to resolve those tensions as best we can. And sometimes, they just turn out to be judgment calls. And when I don't get the call I want, I'm upset about it, and I think that's true for most human beings. But Dennis, you've been a great asset, so thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I would just echo what's been said. You have a unique balance about your thought process, and I know that we've had some discussions about how faculty come to you with their issues, which are very important to them and may or may not be the issue of the association. And yet, you've had a sensitive balance to listen and try and represent them as best as you can. So, again, I won't repeat what's been said, but I really appreciate your balance, Dr. Arjo, and your sensitivity to feelings and emotions of people and understanding the roles and responsibilities all organizations have. And I've often said, if we're all doing what we think we should be doing, we're probably going to have conflict if we represent our organizations as best as we can. And so, the challenge then becomes, how do we resolve that difference of opinion, the friction that you described? So, thank you. Dr. Sobchak.
I think you've all mentioned Dennis's fairness and his objectivity, but no one's mentioned his sense of humor. And I have to say, the sense of humor has come in pretty handy over the past year. And so, thank you, Dennis. You'll be sorely missed, I can tell you, especially by me. But also, there's another component here is your eloquence. I mean, for someone who has to do this, I am always envious of how you're able to put words together and just an incredible weaving of them, and they always sound infinitely better than anything that I could ever aspire to do. So, I just want to thank you for your leadership and also for your commitment to the college. You made a challenging year, I think, all the better and stronger. You made it stronger, so thank you.
Thank you.
His eloquence is simply philosophical. Trustee Lawson?
So much has been said already, and I just want to say thank you so much for your leadership. It takes a lot to stand up and take on more, in addition to everything else that you're doing for our students and making sure that they're successful, but then to also make sure that our faculty are successful. I just appreciate that, and I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Well, let's not get carried away here. He's got another day tomorrow. Thanks, Dennis. Appreciate it very much. Have a good evening. Research Triangle, trustee Lindstrom.
I will have a brief report here. Mr. Carter, I don't know if he's still here, but he mentioned that state sales tax is down in his report, but contrary to that, in Johnson County, state sales tax is up. In January, it was up 4%. In this past, in February, it was up 0.21%. Other than that, we have not met as an organization. We do meet again on May 7th at KU Edwards Center, which is down at 126th and Corvira at KU Edwards Center. And one other note, I think, is important, maybe possibly related to sales tax and assessment for commercial and for residential in Johnson County represents more than 1/3 of the total assessment for the total state, which is interesting to reflect on. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Lindstrom. Kansas Association of Community College Trustees has not met since our last meeting. Our next quarterly meeting is June 1st and 2nd, and the camp, well, not on the campus, I guess, but in Kansas City, Kansas. So, we have a Friday afternoon, evening, and Saturday morning session. If any of you are interested in attending that, let us know, and we'll get you on the list. Foundation, trustee Ingram.
Yes, thank you. The foundation is pleased to share that the 2018 Johnson Countyans of the Year will be Doctors David and Mary Zamorowski of Overland Park. We want to thank Chris Gray and the marketing team for providing the press release that went out this week. Doctors Zamorowski is a retired plastic surgeon, and Mary is a PhD biochemist, and they have both dedicated their retirement years to supporting healthcare education across the Kansas City area and around the globe. As Johnson Countyans of the Year, the Zamorowskis will be recognized at our Summit Enchanted Evening Scholarship Gala on November 10th. Sponsorships, solicitations, sorry, have been organized under the leadership of Mike Lowly, who is serving as sponsorship chairman. John and Christie Stewart are serving as the 2018 co-chairs of the gala this year. The Cohen Community Series will prevent Phil Vassar on May 5th in Yardley Hall. The Cohen Community Series was inaugurated in 2008 through a gift from John Stewart, former vice chairman of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees, in honor of the late Barton P. Cohen. All proceeds for this event go to Johnson County Community College Scholarships and educational programs. The foundation board of directors will meet again on April 25th and on May 22nd at the foundation's annual luncheon. As a reminder, all trustees are invited to the annual luncheon, and we will hope you will enjoy this that day at noon in the CoLab located on the first floor of OCB. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Ingram. Next item is the consent agenda. It's an item where we deal with a number of routine items in one motion. Are there any items that a trustee would like to pull off the consent agenda? Any items that anyone would like to pull off the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Turn my over.
Trustee Ingram moves.
Second.
Trustee Lawson seconds. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Before we, we do have an executive session tonight, but before we move into that, I'd just like to kind of give an opportunity to go around and see if any trustees have final comments. Trustee Snyder, any comments that you'd like to make for tonight's meeting?
I do. Thank you. What a novel idea for us to have an opportunity to share some thoughts outside of the agenda. I do want to thank you, Dr. Cook, for rearranging the seating. This is number one, I have more space, but to be able to see the presenters face-to-face, I think, is a big improvement from my perspective, so thank you for the flexibility. Also, just wanted to note to all the staff, trustee Lawson had encouraged us to move our learning quality time, and I think the first night worked out well to the afternoon, and we're trying that out. So, just appreciate everyone's flexibility. And then, would just note, I think you mentioned earlier, the IISS lunch today, which was phenomenal, and I see trustee Cross wore his international tie since he couldn't go to the lunch, I suppose, unless I missed you there. And then, finally, for those of you that are interested in legislative updates, former Kansas City Star reporter Brad Cooper started a subscription service called the Sunflower State Journal, which he's on the trail of a lot of good scoop. So, if you're interested in more legislative news, you could look that up.
Thank you. Trustee Lawson.
I, too, was someone who had asked about the seating arrangement, so I appreciate the change in modification and letting us be able to do that. I was able to attend the Governance Leadership Institute conference that was last month, and that was something that I think a lot of the trustees have that are, some of the conferences coming up. And that was, I'm very grateful for that opportunity. I think I learned a lot. I brought back some additional reading material that is in the president's office. We're building a trustee library, so that's an opportunity for anybody coming back from conferences to add to that, as far as a shared knowledge. And just kind of learning about some opportunities for college promise to really have more opportunities to bring new and second chance students to improve workforce, but also to potentially expand the bachelorette, bachelorette, oh my goodness, BA degrees. Very different. With the growth in population that we're experiencing here in Johnson County and throughout the state, there's needs for new degrees. So, community colleges are balancing that need by looking into different programs and specifying for those, to also increase enrollment that they find worthwhile in the community. Challenges to some of the things that we talked about at the conference, budget cuts, of course, a lot of things that we mentioned here affecting from federal and state agencies. But then, we also have a group of people that are actively being dissuaded to not attend post-secondary institutes. And so, we saw some information at NDC for the Pew Research Institute that studied many citizens wanting to attend religious schools because of the views that they have on post-secondary colleges and schools. And then, the last thing is just the ever-needing change of curriculums that we have. It's rapidly changing, so we constantly have to stay up with the latest technology, artificial intelligence, robotics, and how we can align to provide the workforce for that. And that was it. It was great.
Thank you. Trustee Musil.
I'm just a cranky old man. I'm still uncomfortable on this side of the road.
You'll get over it. You'll get over it. Are you left-handed or right-handed?
I'm left-handed.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Trustee Lindstrom.
I appreciate the opportunity. I have no comment.
Trustee Cross?
I sat there for two years. I didn't know. I thought it was just hazing.
It was, Lee.
No, I, you know, nobody tell Dr. Sobchak, but I'm actually pretty impressed with what we do at the college, and I appreciate all the hard work that goes into it, including his. So, I love the college. I appreciate what goes on here, Mr. Chair, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Trustee Ingram.
I will just share, and I didn't, we were going to have the opportunity to say this. It's great. It's a surprise. But I am participating in the Living as a Leader Leadership Program with a cohort of 25 people. There are two cohorts of 25 people behind in one of them, and we missed you yesterday.
Sorry.
That's all right. Anyway, it was the second meeting that we had had. I met with Dr. Cook last week. He is my boss in all of this. We had some questions to ask of our boss, and so I selected Dr. Cook to be my boss. So, I think it'll be a great program. Started off strong. I think staff is pretty pleased with it at this point, but we have two years until I become a leader, so.
You're his boss.
No, I'm, well, no, he's my boss.
The chair, thank you. The chair has spoken enough. I will just say that I want to thank all the trustees for their participating in the graduation ceremonies. May is going to be a very, very busy week. Trustee Musil really started that campaign when he was chair to encourage all of us to attend graduation, and I think there are at least two of us now signed up for every graduation ceremony during that. I guess there's about a two-week period where they overlap. So, thank you for participating with that and attending the graduation ceremonies. We do have an executive session tonight, and I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing matters exempt from the Kansas Open Meetings Act relating to privileged conversations with legal counsel and the attorney-client relationship and consultation with the board's bargaining, representation, and employer-employee negotiations. This session will last 45 minutes. We will resume the open meeting in this same location. No action will be taken during this session. We would like to invite Joe Sobchak, Barbara Larson, Becky Sennelvier, Jim Lane, Gerb Singh, Mickey McLeod, Randy Weber, Rachel Leers, Colleen Chandler, Tanya Wilson, and Melody Rail to join in this executive session, and I would like a motion.
So move.
Trustee Lindstrom moves. Trustee Ingram seconds. It's now 6:08 or so. How about if we start at 6:15? That'll give you seven minutes or so. We'll convene back an executive session at 6:15. Thank you for your attendance. Thank you. The board is back in open session. No action was taken. I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. So move.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oceans adjourned, meetings adjourned.
Such with the Lord.